Sorry, I've been listening to something and I got out of it. I'm still trying to get out.
Okay, Bird, we don't have a quorum yet, so just put yourself on mute and we need three more commissioners to show up. Welcome, Secretary Haney. We are waiting for two more commissioners to show up, so we have a quorum. Commissioners, could each of us send out a text to... Never mind. We've got Erin. Are we at a quorum yet, Bird? Yes, we are. Okay, welcome commissioners and our community. We have a few community members on today. We are the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission and we are having a special meeting today, February 24th. I wish to call us to order at 5:02. We have Secretary Haney will be taking notes throughout the meeting and I am Chair Dubois. I'd like to start this meeting before we dive in to make a brief statement. We are living in a time of considerable challenges, in a time where human rights are at the forefront of conversations across America. We are even seeing the diversity of our own community be challenged. Challenges create opportunities. They are how we get better. As Human Rights Commissioners, we are tasked to dive into the challenges to find better ways. If you would like to reach the commissioners directly, you can email us at hr@co.humboldt.ca.us or leave us a message at 707-268-2548. And you can find out more information about the commission by going to the county website and putting in the search bar "human rights." Okay. So let's start with roll call and we have a new commissioner this evening that will introduce at the end of roll call. Welcome. Dubois here. Morgan.
Here.
Thank you. I'm trying to... Haney.
Here.
Here. Lyons. Davies. Harper. Desir. Absent. Locky.
Here.
Miller. Absent. Roe. I believe Erin. Thank you, Erin.
Lelena, do you prefer visual or auditory response?
If we could do auditory, because I'm like multitasking like a mad person right now and that would help me. And David could probably see you guys, but I can't see you. Sundberg. Sundberg has an excused absence. She sent us an email that she would not be able to make the meeting. And then I would love to welcome commissioners. We have a new commissioner and guy. I might... Excuse me, not pronounce your last name right, so I will let you do that, but I want to welcome you. And thank you for taking time to join us. And we would love to hear a little bit, like if you could take a minute to tell us a brief little bit about yourself. And what inspired you to join the commission?
My last name is Aronoff, so any way you pronounce it is fine. I mean, I'm just retired from Humboldt State right now. After 35 years of teaching both K-12 and college level students. I was actually originally on the commission in Humboldt back about a decade ago, but conflicts with meeting times essentially caused me to drop out. Before I came to Humboldt in early 2000s, I was actually living in Ventura County where I was on the Human Rights Commission in Thousand Oaks for about 10 years. So it's something that I've been involved in in my relative past.
Oh, wonderful. We're so glad to have you with all that experience. Oh, that's fantastic. Commissioners, do you have anything that you would like to say to our new commissioner before we move on to the next subject? And Larry, David just came in the room. Bird.
Welcome, Guy. We're glad to have you. Thank you for joining.
This is Eddie Morgan, welcome Guy. And if you have any technical issues or need to find where we keep stuff or anything like that, feel free to contact me. I will contact you. So that way you know, just kind of maybe give you a quick thing of how we do things and then I know the secretary probably and I know the chair will do that. So if you get some emails, feel free to communicate.
Erin.
Also, I wanted to welcome you and great to have all hands on deck. And I know for a while back, we were talking about trying to interface with the college, as everyone always is, to get a student involved with our work. This might be a great liaison for that project.
Oh, yeah. Great idea. Commissioners, any more statements?
Welcome, Guy.
All right. I'm a little bit in the dark about why we're here tonight.
Well, we're going to dive into that. We're here because the Board of Supervisors asked us to help them fine tune the application process and our own process so we could function smoother. So we're here to just to have a quick, hopefully a quick discussion around that, to open the floor to the community and find some solutions. But we have a new commissioner joining us today, Larry, Guy Aronoff. And that's, we were just welcoming him because this is his first meeting with us and welcoming him to the commission.
Great, great. And Larry, did you not get the agenda? There was an agenda set out with all of the things that are on the agenda we're going to talk about.
Essentially, you know, I did, but I'm not quite. I was just curious as to why it required a special meeting. And also, I got a notification about not responding to anybody that, you know, an email that, you know, needed to be directed towards the chair. That's very typical. On something about an appointment that was made or rescinded, again, I just... There's a lot of stuff out there.
You're not the only one, Larry. You're not the only one. We're here today to, you know, to answer questions and have that discussion.
Excellent, excellent.
How do I give you recording rights? Is that David? Sorry, we're also producing this at the same time?
Okay, all right. As long as that's happening, then we're good then. This is Eddie.
No, wait, no. Can't you record?
For some reason, it's not letting me record.
Okay, let's find out why, because that does need to happen. There you go. Now you're co-host. Can you record?
Give me a second.
But we also have access Humboldt recording, Eddie, so I just...
That is correct. We are good to go.
Okay, all right. Next item on the agenda is, do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on non-agenda? Oh, I have one thing to say. Guy, I wanted to welcome you and after this, this is a special meeting, so it's all a little off kilter at the moment. But the vice chair, myself and the secretary, we will sit down with you and orient you. We are in the process of shifting a few things, but don't worry, we're not going to leave you out hanging and throw you in. But fortunately, you have more experience than a lot of us do, so I think you're going to be fine. But we'll reach out tomorrow and make a time for us all to sit down so you can feel part of the team. Okay, so do we have any, now's time for public comment now on non-agenda items. If anyone from the public would like to speak on non-agenda items, please raise your hand.
Could you put the agenda in the chat?
It's online. I see you, Meg. Hang on just a minute. Who asked for that, Eddie? Is there a way that we could get the agenda in the chat?
Give me a second and I will try and do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I can paste that in right now if we're okay to do that.
Yeah, do that, Dave.
Then I just, I can't do more. Okay, so Meg, welcome. Thank you for coming. Hi.
So some of you know me from other things and I am here today because I sent in the application to join or be appointed or whatever the process is. And I wanted to introduce myself. I'm involved in, very active in NAACP, the Legal Readress Committee of NAACP, Justice for Josiah, League of Women Voters. And I've served on community service boards back in New York. I moved here from New York in 2016. And it's been something that's been on my mind as something that I would like to do and feel like it would be a good match for me. And so here I am. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Meg. I want to clarify that we do not have anything to do with the appointment of commissioners. That is completely goes through the Board of Supervisors. But we do love meeting you guys before and having you come and speak to us and we really, really, really do appreciate that. And we look forward to hopefully seeing you, more of you in the near future. But that is completely, it goes through the Board of Supervisors office, your application does. And that is completely up to the discretion of the Board of Supervisors.
I actually know that and it was Mike Wilson, my supervisor, who sent me the application.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
However that goes, I'm hoping for a good outcome.
Well, we need commissioners, so we're all, we, you know, we would love to see you here. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on non-agenda items?
Yes, you have a hand up. Levy?
Levia. Hi, Levia. Hi, yeah, yeah. Hi, um, so it, I'm, the chat didn't come through for some reason for me. Oh, here it is, okay. Um, so I just, I had a question on the... The... I guess the checks and balances of racism inside of the Human Rights Commission. I wanted to know what equity work is being done inside of the Human Rights Commission and what inclusivity is being done inside of there as well. I did hear you when you said that the Board of Supervisors is who picks and so that sounds like that. I'm going to have to ask them the same question. But I wanted to know for you who are here today, what is happening to make sure that you are acting or are living in a way that is not racist, not with bias and with inclusivity?
Thank you for that. You do need to speak to the Board of Supervisors directly around that issue. I... As a commissioner, I don't, Bird, can I respond? I'm trying not to break the Brown Act right now, but so Bird, can I, can I respond?
My, actually, my question is actually directly for you, Madam Chair, so you are more than welcome to answer me.
Well, because of the Brown Act, we do not respond to anything that is not on the agenda. However, I think, Levia, if you stay on, that you may find that this is answered during our agenda. So if you have the time and do that. Good. Thank you.
Okay. And if she asked, Bird, if she asked the question during, and it's appropriate, can I respond then? Because I wish to respond, but I wish to do it appropriately.
Yes, if it comes up under an agenda item, then definitely it can be discussed.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Well, all right, we will move on to the next item. Which is the UN definition of human rights. I just, I went on, you know, because we're going to dive in to a conversation around applications and requirements and responsibilities. And I wanted to really clarify what our roles are as commissioners. And to help us as commissioners clarify that within ourselves, but also for our community to understand a little better. I think we're at a time, like I said earlier, where human rights is really at the forefront of most conversations, or at least we hope so. And we haven't had a lot of really big conversations in Humboldt County and haven't had to over the years. And I think we just kind of need to be reminded as a community and as commissioners, really what brought us here in the first place. And so I'm just going to really briefly read to you the UN definition of human rights. What are human rights? Human rights are inherent to all human beings regardless of race, sex, nationality, ethnicity, language, religion, or any other status. Human rights include the right to life and liberty, freedom from slavery and torture, freedom from opinion and expression, the right to work and educate and many more. Everyone is entitled to these rights without discrimination. Civil and, so we have different types of rights broken down into that. We have economic, social, and cultural rights, which are defined by the UN. The International Convention on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights entered into force in 1976. The human rights that the convention seeks to promote and protect include the right to work in just and favorable conditions, the right to social protection to an adequate standard of living and to the highest attainable standards of physical and mental well-being, the right to education and the enjoyment of benefits of cultural freedom and scientific progress. Then we go into civil and political rights. The International Convention on Civil and Political Rights and its first optional protocol entered into force in 1976. The second was adopted in 1989. The convention deals with such rights as freedom of movement, equality before the law, the right to a fair trial, and presumption of innocence, freedom of thought, conscience and religion, freedom of opinion and expression, peaceful assembly, freedom of association, participation in public affairs and elections, and protection of minority rights. It prohibits arbitrary deprivation of life, torture, cruel or degrading treatment or punishment, slavery and forced labor, arbitrary arrest or detention, arbitrary interference with privacy, war propaganda, discrimination, and advocacy of racial or religious hatred. All right, I would like to open the floor for discussion with the commissioners.
Hi, Mary.
Hi there. Hello, everybody. I'm Marion Lyons. I apologize for being a couple of minutes late, connectivity issues. But I think the universal human rights is very interesting in its inception. And I can speak about it as a teacher and I teach it every year to my students and I allow them the opportunity to create their own list of what they believe human rights should be. Now, of course, we get a little silly when they think all humans should have the right to have video game consoles, but then we break it down, we get serious. So I believe that it's very important to share our understanding of exactly what you expressed with our family members, our community members. And I myself, as a teacher, I spend a lot of time discussing those exact things. So I just wanted to share a little bit about who I was as a teacher and that I spend a lot of my time sharing that. And I do have it posted and it is, it is something to live by. Thank you all in Roosevelt.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any other commissioners that would like to speak on this? I think, Erin, I think you were up first.
Okay, I just, I'm seeing a comment from a Deona. It says, "The Brown Act seems like a holder of white supremacist culture." So I'm wondering if there's someone who could just briefly explain the intention and the structure of the Brown Act and purpose.
Bird.
To address that.
I wanted to respond to that comment also. The Brown Act is designed, and it's very old. It goes back almost 50 years, I think, doesn't it, Erin? Something like...
1954.
Yes, and it is, it has been relaxed a little bit because of the pandemic. We would not be able to have a virtual meeting under the original Brown Act. But the design of it is for meetings to be open and for anyone in the public to know what the governing body or the commission will be discussing beforehand. In other words, if a subject comes up from someone from the floor that is not on the agenda, if we started discussing that, people in the community would not know that we were going to discuss that particular issue. And it might be something that a half a dozen people were really interested in and wanted to be at the meeting, didn't know about it and only found out about it because they read about it in the paper the next day. That's the idea. The idea is to be sure that anything that is discussed by the body is announced ahead of time, so people who are interested are able to be there if they want to be.
Thank you, Bird, for explaining that. Do any other commissioners have anything that they'd like to speak on as far as to what human rights are? Bird. You go ahead, David. I think Bird was just a moment after you.
No, no, Bird, go right ahead. I'll go after Bird.
Well, I just wanted to say that one of the things that I think about, when I think about human rights, is that if I think of someone not getting something or being denied some kind of right or being in a situation that they don't like, I try to put myself in the same situation. How would I feel? Would I feel that my rights were being trampled on just as that person might be? So I think if we try to make it personal and say, what is it that every single person should be able to have? That that helps us to define in our own minds what human rights are.
Thank you, Bird. David?
I actually just really quickly wanted to loop back to add on to the comment that Bird made around the Brown Act. It's really interesting because in implementation, what it seems like is the Brown Act is there to help support people's accessibility to certain conversations. But in the end, it seems oftentimes that the Brown Act is very restrictive. And I think that that can be exemplified with what's going on with the Board of Supervisors right now and that recent cease and desist letter that they received. You know, so it's this interesting double edged sword that unfortunately elected and appointed officials have to abide by. I wish I didn't, but here we are.
I would like to add, any other commissioners that would like to speak on, I would like to add that, you know, maybe it is archaic. Maybe it doesn't work. There's so many things in our government like that, right? Because all of this was built off of things years ago. But still, in order for us to hold the integrity of the projects that this commission's doing and to protect our commissioners who have projects that they, that we want to support, we have to follow those rules. Otherwise, we put everything, the work we've been doing, that our community does around human rights in jeopardy. And we don't want to do that, so we do our best to follow those rules.
Mary has her hand up.
Mary?
It's often hard to remind ourselves that everyone deserves a voice. And as Bird reminded us, the purpose of the Brown Act is to make sure that when we are debating a topic or we have concerns about an issue or want to bring even good news forward, if we have not been given the opportunity because we didn't know that people are going to get together and talk about it, that creates a lot more upset. Also, what happened with the Board of Supervisors was simply that they didn't have their screen like we have it now. So that all commissioners could be seen on screen, so that they knew all commissioners were there. And that is what the concern was. And that was because during the Brown Act, you would all be in the same room to form a quorum. We've reached the technological society. We have been speaking with somebody who's pretty cool, I think, who really did like to explain to us at our last meeting a lot more than I understood, for those of you who weren't there, that talked about how they are looking at bringing the Brown Act into the modern world as far as technology is concerned, where the concerns are. But the beauty about this, being able to be to the point where we can now at least meet virtually, is before this time, you would have all, and I would have, and everybody would have had to have been in the county courthouse for any meeting, which I feel made it very difficult for a community like ours, who is so remote in many instances, to have been able to enjoy the privilege of being able to be in a meeting. So the Brown Act is moving forward into the 21st century. And it really does create a point of order because everybody knows I'm a talker. And if I didn't have the Brown Act to keep me quiet, I could blurt over everybody. If I didn't have Robert's Rules of Orders in the Brown Act, meetings would just become shouting matches very often. So while it may seem archaic to some, the Brown Act and Robert's Rules of Orders really allow us to conduct ourselves civilly, which is very complicated to do with so many disparate point of view very often.
Thank you, Mary. Any other commissioners? I think Bird, you are next. Bird and then Larry.
I just wanted to respond to something that David said. One of the things that the Brown Act does allow is for people to speak on something that is not on the agenda. And if it is not on the agenda, that person can say, please put this on your agenda for your next meeting. And if the commission chose not to do that, that is public record of the commission saying, no, we don't want to discuss that. And then, then you're really opening a can of worms. If you have somebody in the community that wants us to discuss something, it's our obligation to put it on the agenda for the next meeting so that we can discuss it for that person.
Thank you, Bird. In fact, you see most of our, almost all of our agenda items, except for the ones that are taking care of administrative type things, are from community public comment coming to speak on non-agenda items. Larry?
Yeah, I'd like to maybe give a little bit of long-term view of the Human Rights Commission. Quite frankly, it's my feeling that the Brown Act has not done anything to further our mission, enable other, you know, folks to join, you know. I guess what I'm saying, it's like we can't legislate morality. You know, I guess what I'm saying, it's like we can't legislate morality. In the days, we used, the Human Rights Commission used to have potlucks where we would all come together and, and, you know, meet each other, eat, break bread together, communicate, find out who we were and what we stood for. Now, with the Brown Act, we'd have to post an agenda and, you know, invite the public. And it's that, that kind of, I don't know, I, I'm, you know, like I said, I'm kind of the old guard. But I do not think people with good hearts acting and their, you know, the best interests of the community need the Brown Act personally. But, okay, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Larry. I find it frustrating. I find it slows things down. But, but then I also see how the government body, when you're working with so many different experiences coming to one table, it also helps. So, you know, I, 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 I see all sides of this conversation. But let's move forward. Any other topics on human rights, the definition of human rights? All right, I'd like to open up to the public. Does the public have anything they would like to say on the topic of what human rights are?
Meg has her hand up.
You?
All right, Leva has her hand up. Leva?
It's Levia. Levia.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to know, because I have been following this for a couple of months now. And I, I hear you when you say that there are guidelines and things like that because you don't want to lose projects that are in the works. I did have a direct question of where in the human rights portion of everything that we just had defined to us, does cannabis fall? Because to me, it seems strange that we have cannabis as a large component of the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission in regard to, like, indifference to, like, the other topics that I see actively happening in our community. Can you explain that?
I can only explain, first of all, I don't, it's one thing that we're doing. And we've actually are almost finished with that. And it was only, I believe, a six-month project. I don't even think it took that long. But, you know, I can't answer, you know, every committee has a different chair. And we all do things and approach the commission with different types of actions. And I can only say that, you know, that committee has done a lot of work in the past six months. But you can look at our, our past. And we've also had actions around other things, like for, I chaired a committee that was around human trafficking. And that was a two and a half year project, but it accomplished a lot in that two and a half years. Every committee and every committee chair chooses different kinds of ways to address projects. And they show up a little differently to the public.
I guess my question is, how does, how is cannabis a human rights issue?
Well, if you look at the history of human rights, for example, like blood diamonds and underground economies, there are, the two tie really, really tightly together. And as a county, we have proclaimed that cannabis is one of our biggest, if not our biggest economic function in Humboldt County. Yet we have never, we've taken it into consideration economically, but we've never taken it into consideration as far as social welfare and as far as human rights. How is it impacting our community? And we talk about homelessness. We've talked about human trafficking. Those have been on our agenda. We have racism and anti-racism and cultural awareness. And cannabis touches all of those subjects, yet we've never been able to look at them. And with legalization, we finally have the opportunity to really consider, how is that impacting those different issues that we deal with? Mary?
Hi, I just wanted to share, to Levia and the other people attending the meeting, that I am a full-time teacher. And I chose to be on the, on the commission that was looking at human rights violations in the cannabis industry, but not just in the cannabis industry. We allow for people, and it's a very first time, by the way, that we've ever addressed this on the Human Rights Commission. We've never had a committee that's looked at the impact of cannabis on human rights before. This is a very new thing. We've never done it before. We, it's a first and only time we've ever done it. One of the things we looked at is how does cannabis, when human trafficking impacts it? There's an intersection there. There's an intersection with homelessness. Upon legalization, there's an intersection with sexual violence. There's also an intersection with, once it became legal, how people were treated. There's an intersection with education. There's an intersection with being able to acquire healthcare benefits. The medicine you need, if you believe that marijuana is your medicine. What have been the barriers to receiving medicine that you believe you need? If you are a terminally ill patient, if you have, if you have constant pain or other issues. So I didn't think lightly joining that committee, but it's the very first time we've ever looked at that issue. And because it is something that is specifically very dominant feature of Humboldt County, and it was brought to our attention by people, reach our attention, ask us to put it on the agenda and look at it, we chose to take that, or look at it because we could not, because it was brought to our attention. But I want people to be very clear, we're not spending all of our time on that. We, I see your question, Levia, and we are just finalizing our data on that. And it will have, and the Board of Supervisors will be the ones that we present it to. And if I believe, is that correct?
That is correct.
And once the Board of Supervisors gets our information, which is very valuable information, it'll be very interesting when you see it, then it will be publicly accessible. Because our role as a commission is to look at human rights issues. Form, if we need to form a committee or whatever we need to form, do that. And then we report directly to the supervisors. We are their commissioners. We report to them and, and, and disseminate, and they help us disseminate the information to the public.
I want, I want to add that we will present, the process, how it will work is that we will present the information to the commission first. And then the commission will say, "Good job," or "Go fix this," or "Go figure this out." But once the commission approves it, then it'll be presented to the Board of Supervisors.
You're right, sorry. I skipped that step.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, do we have, we were still on our first agenda item. Hi, Bird?
Well, and just to say that we may, as a commission, based on that report, make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, which we can do.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. Okay, do we, shall we move on to the next topic?
Can we answer Meg's question real quickly? Meg, we sent out a questionnaire to the, to the community.
What, what's the question?
What's the information we use to gather this data? We actually put out a survey. We collected data on the survey, and that data is being analyzed by reputable sources. And we're going to provide us some information on that, on that survey and on the data they collected. And we're going to present that data to the commission, who will look at it and going from there. But, and you'd be more than welcome to get a copy of the survey if you want to, because it's public. It's out there in the public.
Well, the survey's closed, so we can't fill it out anymore because-
No, but she could see what it was.
Absolutely. Um, and, oh, I totally forgot what I was gonna say. Sorry. Oh, goodness. Um, yeah, I'll remember later and have to circle back to it. Can we move on to the next? I can't see all the chat, so if Eddie, if Commissioner Haney and Commissioner Morgan could please just tap me and say, "Chair, we have some information." But if we could also make sure that any public comment refers to the agenda item. Because we're filtering in things that aren't on the agenda. And I want to make sure that we stick to the agenda. I do hear things such as the Brown Act that is on our next agenda. But right now, we've got to get through what we've promised the public that we would address tonight. Okay, defining the requirements of a human rights commissioner. This, this is something that Virginia Supervisor Bass asked me to read a letter that she wrote around this in response to an appointee withdrawing her application. And so I will read this, and then I'll open up the floor to discussion. From Supervisor Bass, "This certainly has highlighted the important work the Human Rights Commission does. It also has shown that more work lies ahead. Often, when community members ask about specific commissioners, it shows that they are interested in being a part of the process. There isn't a specific background checked. While people may feel strongly about one issue or another..." Oh, I lost my spot, sorry. "...while people feel strongly about one issue or another, we expect them to be able to be unbiased as they approach issues. As situations or different topics of discussion arise, it would seem appropriate that all views can be expressed. And if someone runs into an issue where they truly cannot check their bias at the door, they should remove themselves from the conversation. The Human Rights Commission has its own rules of conduct to ensure views can be clearly expressed and freely discussed. They expect any bias to be, as I said, checked out the door. And if it's not happening, they can ask to have that person removed. This conversation has also highlighted the need for the commission to have an application for interested individuals that is more extensive and specific than the general application we use for most of our committees and commissions. I believe this is something the commission is going to tackle. I would like for them to be able to create a custom application and then also have them be a part of the process in helping the supervisors determine what voices are needed at the table and who is most appropriate. Everyone can't think the same because that doesn't really provide the diversity that would like to be, we would like to be seen on the Human Rights Commission. Once people are in that room, they need to operate as a team, which means accepting the fact that not everyone is going to be on the same wavelength all the time. It would be a problem if people only cared about equality and freedom of expression, if it confirms with their own opinions, excluding the opportunity for collaboration and genuine discussion and sharing of ideas that truly allow our community to come together around shared values and ideas. At the most basic level, excluding someone based on their religious beliefs is just as discriminatory as excluding someone due to their sexual orientation or beliefs. I think something that can be done, however, is to provide a space at the table for those different views to be expressed. Diversity of opinions is good, but the decision that comes from the conversation needs to be unbiased. It is a delicate balance. Perhaps the commission will find that it's not appropriate for an individual to be on the commission if they can't push bias aside. But interested parties can still take part in the meetings because they are open to the public, just like any of our other meetings. And that way, the voice can still be heard. On a closing note, Ms. Jackson asked to have her name removed from consideration based on the negative feedback and conversations that were shared. She did not want her views to be something that derailed the good work the commission does. Does she feel like her rights have been dismissed and trampled on? Yes, I would say she probably does. At the most basic level, that's not okay either. In closing, I think a lot of valuable conversation has been kickstarted. And I do know that the commission is very interested in finding ways to have as many voices heard as possible while still being able to continue their work. And then I wanted to read after that, before we open the floor, just to talk about what our... I'm just gonna read the first paragraph of what our, what our goals are. And, and I already kind of read this, "But the purpose of a commissioner, a commission on human rights is to promote tolerance, mutual respect between all persons, and to promote positive human relationships for the purpose of ensuring public peace, health, safety, and the general welfare." Now, I would like to speak to this for just a moment. You know, an incident happened, and I want to take some responsibility for that incident. I am a new chair. I, this is a new role for me as a leader in, in working in government. I am an act, I came to this role as an activist, as a grassroots activist. And I've spent, I've been on this commission now. I'm going into my fifth year. And I've learned a lot thanks to the leaders of this group, like our ex-chair, Jim Glover and Bird and Larry and some other commissioners that are, that are no longer on the commission, have really been patient with me and helped fostered me through this. But, but I have a lot to still learn. That being said, there's a lot of tricks to being a commissioner that, that I'm still learning. And like I said, I've been on here five years. And, and one of the beauties of this commission and what I was tasked, I had two specific tasks of chair. One was to bring in more youth, bring in more diversity, bring in more innovation to the commission. The other was to do more outreach, so people understood how we worked and people started participating in that. And so that being said, we now have a very young commission. And I don't mean in age, I just mean in experience of being commissioners. So I would ask you as a community, because we all are volunteers, to have patience with all of us as we navigate and learn these roles and grow. Because we all are really here because we care about this community as a whole, and we are very passionate individuals. So please have patience with me as the chair of this commission and have patience with our commissioners as we move forward. And I'd like to open up the floor to any of you commissioners.
Well said.
Well said.
Thank you, Larry. Bird?
I will say, I will start with this. Every one of us in this room and everyone in Humboldt County and throughout this country has biases. We all do. Everybody does. And sometimes we think that our bias is not a bias, but the right thing to think. Everybody else has biases, and they may think the same thing about their bias. We need to be really careful about shutting someone down because we disagree with what they say. We also have to be really careful that as a commission, when we discuss things, we put our own bias as far away as we can. But we also need to recognize that it's there. It's in us. We all have different biases, and we need to hear everybody's voice. If, when we're having discussions, people cannot put their bias behind them or out the door or whatever, and they refuse to be part of the team discussion and the final decision-making based in as little bias as we can, then we need to say they're not a good commissioner. But until that happens, I'm not sure that I can say this person is not a good commissioner.
Monique, I see your comments. Could, could you get it on screen, Monique? Because of the Brown Act, as a commissioner, there's, it's one of the issues that they're having around the Brown Act. Mary Ann, too.
Yeah, I'm on my cell phone, and my phone's in my pocket, so I can turn my camera on, but it won't be my face either.
Bird, what, how does that, so does she count, can we count her as a present commissioner because of that? Or how does that work?
I don't know, because I'm not sure of all the changes that were made for the pandemic. Because this is something that comes up all the time. Technology doesn't always work for everybody all the time. So I'm not sure. But is it possible, Monique, to take, take it out of your pocket and turn the camera on and show us your face? Does that work or not?
I'm just, I mean, I can show you periodically, for the moment, I'm just not in a stagnant position. So I'm like walking with my phone, and I'm being present at the same time.
Hey, no, we appreciate that. And it wouldn't, you know, before, we had no problems. It's just, these are issues that have recently been brought to the county. that have recently been brought to the county. And, and, and so we're just trying to figure out, figure our ways. Would you have to say, Monique, because we want to hear from you? Hang on, Larry, we're waiting for Monique. She was texting.
Yeah, I was just saying that it's, I think that people have biases all the time, we're human. But if your bias is a direct interference with someone having access to human rights, then I don't think that you are someone that should be representing a Human Rights Commission, regardless of how much or how little that I know you.
Thank you, Monique.
Larry and Mary.
Hi, guys. So it might be a little noise in the background. I've got my family and from out of town. I'm doing the best I can to be present, but I'd like to share that it's difficult to change the world overnight in a controlled environment. And being on a committee or a commission is a controlled environment. And we have to be careful because we are in a controlled environment, accepting the duty as volunteers and we put a lot of time and energy into volunteering. Hold on, close that door for me, guys. Accepting the responsibility, but without, I don't even know if we're allowed to say we completely agree with you or not. But we understand and that's why we've chosen to be commissioners on the Human Rights Commission. Some of our committees, I, for example, chair the Kindness Committee, but at one point in time, it was called the Anti-Hate Speech Committee. We chose to vote to change the name to Kindness so that we could spend our time trying to balance negative speech with kinder activities. So, and those, the anti-hate speech was sprung out of a need that a community, Tom Ray, close his door. Came out of, oh, well, they're not listening to me. Came out of a need and a desire by a community member to address that issue. And because they knew it was a human rights violation and how could we interact and do something? And that's how, for example, the Kindness Commission got created. There are many ways to address injustices in society and in our community, which we all choose to do when we are out in the real world, but on the Human Rights Commission, we're still bound by certain conventions. And we have to follow those conventions to even have a Human Rights Commission. So we're following our conventions, we're doing the best we can. And anytime you want to bring something forward, hold on one minute. Tom Ray, close this door, please. Tom Ray!
Mary, Mary.
I apologize, I have a lot of family in town, but just so you guys know, it's not for lack of wanting and not for lack of what we're doing out in the community as our own people, but we are, you know, we're a government commission and we report to the human, I mean, we report to the Humboldt County Supervisors.
David? If I may, a point that I needed to make sure is acknowledged with this conversation is I hear the this, the part of the discussion where we want to give everyone their free right to express themselves, let's say. What I want to make sure it's clear is when you have a commission like this, and again, I, we always come back to pretty often that this is unpaid work. And you open up a commission of diver, with people of diverse backgrounds, up to being subject, even just subjected to certain conversations, it can create trauma for people. If the, if the conversation was to move into, you know, delving deeper into any kind of biased views, let's just say I was a LGBTQ person and I'm having to sit in a discussion that is debating my existence or, you know, my, my right to my sexual orientation, that is going to create trauma for me, even just being subjected to the conversation in that open, opening the conversation up in that manner as if it has a place on the platform makes the platform less inviting to important members of this community. And so I just, I wanna, I wanna make sure that as a part of this process, that that is understood, that while we, you know, there may be a need for people to express their freedom of speech, that can create trauma for other people being exposed to those conversations.
Thank you, David. Yes, I, I think, you know, as commissioners, we've made a decision to put ourselves in the middle of that trauma, haven't we? And that's kind of the roles we've chosen i- is to mediate those conversations. But yes, I, I, I agree. Are there any other comments on this, Larry? I think you had something to, to say.
I have. That's right. I'm, what I was gonna say then is no longer relevant. But in response to what David was talking about, you know, you know, and the commission has been talking about racism and the systemic racism and how, as Dave said, just creating just trauma, well, that trauma is, is stress and stress, as we have now, you know, know, is very unhealthy. And it's, you know, part of where we want to try to go with some of our, our actions is to try to figure out how we can address this systemic racism that exists in this country. Yeah. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thanks, Larry. All right, any more comments from commissioners and we can open it up to the public? All right, are there any, anyone from the public wish to comment on this? We have two more agenda items to get to, too. I'm seeing Eddie, David, oh, Meg.
Um, yes, I, I would like to say things, I'd like to put out that we need to differentiate opinion from, from actions or actions that may derive from opinions. We're not, we're not talking about someone's religious beliefs. We're talking about what those religious beliefs may lead that person or persons to say and do. And I have, you know, being active in the community in many things, I have heard systemic racism, microaggressions. And I've, I've also heard people actually talk about that people should and are going to die and go to hell because of their sexual orientation. And this commission needs to have some, some meaning beyond, it checks off a slot of, we, we've got something here. It has to, you know, in my humble opinion, it has to have a meaning that is actually going to serve all of us. No one is saying that somebody can't have their opinion, but do we want that opinion, just like, you know, the, you know, people who, you know, were beating people to death with, you know, you know, flagpoles and things like that on, on the sixth or, you know, people who believed that, you know, black enslaved people were less, do we want, do we really, are we obligated to have that opinion be part of the conversation? And, you know, whether this ruins then my chances of ever being on this commission, I'm gonna say, no, you know, no, I just don't, I don't think so. Not that they can't have their opinion, but on a Human Rights Commission, unless you're going to be looked at as hypocritical and, and dangerous than for the people that you are trying to say, we, we want your voice, we honor your voice and the differences that. So that's my.
Thank you, Meg. I don't think many of us disagree with you. We just, as commissioners, we do not appoint the commissioners. We have no say in that process. Today, we have been invited to discuss whether we would like to consider, well, that's the next agenda item, the, an applicant, revamping the application to support the Board of Supervisors. But as a Human Rights Commission, we do not have anything to do with that application process at this point in time. So I, I wanted to make that clear. Yes, Larry?
I have a real quick question. As individuals, commissioners, can we, if we know somebody has applied, we really think that they'd be great, is it within our power to call the, the supervisor and, you know, say, hey, you know, I really hope you.
Yeah, I mean, I rec, I recommend it. If you, if you see, if you have someone, I mean, Erin has recommended someone, then you should support them to the finish line, would be my recommendation. But you're just a referral. All right, we have, we have two, I see two hands up. It looks like, I think Carapani was first. Did I pronounce that right? I'm terribly sorry.
Yes, no, thank you. It's Carapani.
Carapani.
Yeah, I'm, I'm feeling a great deal of concern at this point in time that, that we're not recognizing the enormity of this conversation and that there's more emphasis that I'm getting, that we need to get through the agenda. And that, that bothers me because it's, it's, it's confirming the fact that we're not recognizing the enormity of the conversation. And what I heard you say, Chair, was is that that the commission is, has been given this time to have this discussion by the Board of Supervisors, but that the Board of Supervisors choose the commissioners. Is it possible that this should be a conversation between the Board of Supervisors and the commission? This is a huge conversation and there's already been some very valid points made from Monique and Yana and Meg and, and David and I, I'm not sure they're being taken as seriously as they need to be for our Human Rights Commission. Thank you, Pass.
I, I think one of the reasons that I want to get through this agenda is because I want to get to solving the problems. And the next two agenda items are a way for us as a commission to start discussing and creating solutions. And, and I, and, and that, that is the next two agenda items. So I, I apologize if it sounds like I'm, I, I think we all think, or we wouldn't have called this special meeting, that this is a really important conversation. I just tend to want to really get to the solution, because this is a conversation, I think, every single person that's listening and participating on this call knows we need a better solution. So I apologize if that's how I'm presenting and, and it's not my intention. It's that I, I literally have 55 more minutes to get to a place so this commission can do something about it, and I just want to make sure we get there.
All right, our, 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 our next, let's let the public speak and then we can circle back. Or do you have a, a response to what Carapani said? Mary Ann, you do? Okay.
I do have a response. Our very next agenda item is to form a committee to be able to address the issue of how we choose to look at who comes onto Human Rights Commission. So I believe very strongly that if we're patient and we just allow that to happen, that we're gonna find that really we're getting to where we all wanted to be at the beginning of the meeting, which is to come up with ways to create a pathway for folks to be part of the Human Rights Commission and appointed by supervisors that have been headed. And, and that's kind of our ultimate overarching goal because of events that have happened recently. So I just want to cheer going to the next one so I can make a motion to form a committee. Let's do it.
And I also want to let everyone know that if you wish to talk to the commission, you need, the chats aren't covered under the brown dock and I can't respond, we're not supposed to respond. So you have to speak during the time that we open the floor to public comment. And I believe Levia was up next. Am I correct, David and Eddie? All right, Levia, hi, thanks.
Thank you. I have heard multiple times in this conversation, the statement that the Board of Supervisors is who picks the commission. Now, I appreciate that everyone here is a volunteer and that everyone here is giving their time to these special programs. I, I, my question goes back to my very first question, which was, who or what will hold you as the commission accountable? Are you holding each other accountable? Is there some kind of checks and balances for the types of things that we're running into in this conversation? When we're talking about the people who would be harmed, do you know what it means to, to be or to have a person in your life who is a, you know, an LGBTQ person who has experienced this kind of trauma or a black person who has experienced this kind of trauma? And mind you, I'm not asking if you have a black friend or if you, anything like that. I'm specifically asking, like, where is the equity work happening? And who is keeping everybody inside of the commission accountable?
So I'll, I'll speak to it and then I'll open. We keep each other accountable, the Board of Supervisors keeps us accountable, the County Council keeps us accountable. Just like any other commission, we're held to the same accountabilities as the rest of those commissions. We are, we present in a very, I understand, white way, but I can promise you, without divulging all of our personal histories, that each and every single commissioner on this commission has experienced trauma, oppression, stigmatization. And it's why we're here, it's why we volunteer, because we care that much. And we do, we don't understand everybody's experience, but we've all had experiences enough in our own corner to want to be here helping us all come together on the same page.
Okay, so then to, to kind of the other part of my question is, when was the last time that you all had equity training?
As a commission? Bird?
As a commission.
We had, we had a training, Jim, you're on, help me out, was it a couple of years ago? That we had that training from Humboldt State?
Yes, I don't recall the date or anything like that, but yes, that's about right, two years ago.
Okay, so nothing current and nothing in the climate that we're living in actively?
I would say that, and I would also say that the public holds us accountable, which you are doing right now. This is a.
Yes, I appreciate you noticing that. I appreciate that.
That is, that is exactly what needs to happen. It, you need to help us.
Bird, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things that, so that's, you know, I do understand that we are in a different time and things are a little harder. One of the things that I identified is that I have been to meetings where I have seen things like microaggressions happen inside the meeting. And while it may not be noticed, it is definitely something that I noticed. And so this is why I ask the questions that I do, because I am a community teammate. And so this is why I ask the questions that I do, because I am a community teammate and I would love to be on some of these boards and commissions, but it doesn't feel safe enough to do that yet. So I would hope that this conversation jumpstarts that kind of education to happen so that we can have a place where we don't have to worry about someone whose views are going to come in, traumatize the community and the, and the commissioners in the process.
Sorry, I'm on mute.
And I'd like to close with, I would like to close with, can we get equity training on the next agenda?
We cannot get it on the next agenda because it's already gone out. But.
Okay, so then.
I would be happy to put it on for new business and take it into, you know, the next agenda.
Okay.
Commission.
Okay.
All right, Bird, did, did you have a response?
Well, I, I'm, I think this is part of what we're talking about. And that is that the appropriate place for this whole discussion to have happened in the beginning would have been at the board of supervisors' meeting when this issue was on the agenda. I'm not sure whether it was on the consent calendar, but it can be taken off the consent calendar for discussion. And that is the, the appropriate time because it's, it's not the commission that is doing that appointment. It is the board of supervisors and their, their place for people from the community to hold them accountable is at their meeting to say, please remove that from the agenda, so, from the consent calendar so that we can speak to it. And then the discussion would happen there. And Levia, when you were saying that it needs to happen with the board of supervisors, actually, that is the place where ideally it would have happened.
I think one of the things that I would like to say is that I, I do, I plan on having the same exact conversation with the board of supervisors. I also would like to name that I'm asking you all as the commissioners of a human rights committee to get equity training. This is not something that I believe needs to wait to be on an agenda to be approved. We have wonderful programs like Equity Arcade where this can be happening now and it should be open that you guys are doing something like that. And so I'm going to ask the board of supervisors as well, but this is something that needs to be happening actively. The work that you do lines up with equity training and it's not something that I feel like needs to wait until we get it on an agenda and get it approved. It's something that should have already happened.
We don't disagree with you, but unfortunately, we do have to put it on the agenda for it to happen for us like that.
You can't do it independently? You can't go and get equity training?
Yeah, individually, we can. I've had, and I think other people have too.
Yeah, but not as the commissioners.
I, I just have a simple question.
I, I can't see everybody's, Meg, I want to make sure I get through, but I think you're the last person left that wants to speak, so.
Right. It's just a simple question. If there is someone that the board has recommended or actually been appointed, does the mission have the authority to say, this person either shouldn't be appointed or we don't want this person to be appointed, or this person has shown that, you know, they're, they're not guarding human rights in the way that is safe? Is there any authority for that or it's all the board of supervisors?
It, it is all the board of supervisors. However, just like, I think it was Larry asked, like, could he call the board of supervisors and say, I would really like this person on the commission? As a commissioner, we could call that board of supervisors or it would be appropriate to call the chair of the commission first and have a conversation. And then the chair and you could reach out to that board of supervisor and possibly have a discussion or maybe it would be brought to the commission. It would really depend on that situation. But yes, there is a process that we can communicate and, and we do express our opinions to them.
And if you remember what Virginia Bass said in her letter, she addressed that. And she said, if a commissioner was not putting aside their bias, that we could ask for that person to be removed. So it, it can be done.
If I could add one small point after something that Bird was discussing earlier that I just think needs to be a part of this discussion is that these board of supervisors meeting agendas are put out with very little headway in terms of time before the actual meetings. And I think that needs to be just a part of this discussion, you know, because if the public is made aware of an appointment that is out of the commission's hands and they only have, let's say, 72 hours or so to, you know, do the work that needs to be done to make their voice heard, whether it's at a board of supervisors meeting or making a phone call, that's a pretty, it's a short amount of time for, especially during this climate and as busy as people are. I just thought that needed to be a point of discussion as well.
Thank you, David. Does anyone have any response to David?
Yeah, I just want to add that I think it also, the amount of people that are connected to the outreach that happens and then give people 72 days or 72 hours to respond. It's like you have to already be connected with the commission to be a part of those communications. And, and just like if you're a community member that's not within a government structure, you're going to have less access to this chain of communication that happens around our meetings and our agendas and approving, being able to get here.
Thank you. And, and, yeah, it is a hurdle. I mean, with, with virtual, we at least are, we're more accessible now than we were before. But you know, as a commissioner, I, I think we can take on some responsibility around that and put out those agendas on our personal networks as well, you know, at least for, for our agendas and the board of supervisors. I, I, you know, I don't think there's a big solution to that, except for us taking that on ourselves as commissioners to trying to help share that information with our community as much as possible. You know, the press doesn't, it's, I don't know about the board of supervisors, but for us as a commission, we send out our stuff to every press network we have in town, but they don't pick it all up. You know, it's their choice too. So we, we do do our best as far as getting it out there to the press, but I can't speak on how the board of supervisors does it. Okay, shall we move on to the next agenda item and see what kind of, if we can come to a place of creating solutions? The next agenda item is reviewing, as we heard in Supervisor Bass's email, she asked us a couple of things. One was to help get more involved with the process. The other was to try to review the appointment process and the application and see how we, what we could do. I would like to open that up for conversation with the commissioners.
Real quick, should I, should we bring up the fact that Mary did bring up a motion in the last meeting item that we, if, if maybe it's now time to bring that motion up again, to form the committee?
We, that, that, we're now at that agenda item, but we should have a discussion, I think, or should we do the motion now?
Well, I, I feel like what I was saying was, let's get to where we are now so we can have the discussion so we can make the motion. I, I was just kind of letting everybody know we're, we're moving in that direction. We're going to make a motion, make a commission to create a better application so that there's a better vetting process by the board of supervisors. So that's our, kind of our ultimate goal, I believe. I'm not sure. Also, where is Virginia Bass's letter? I did not receive it and I feel like I can't speak to it because I haven't seen it.
I, I just read it to everybody and it's in.
I apologize.
It was on the email with the agenda and it's.
Right, I'll go find it so I can, for more, okay, thank you.
It was also sent, I don't know if you were looped in on the, it was in an, in an email to, to the commit, to a few of us commissioners as well.
I, I didn't receive it. That's okay. I'll go find it. But I wanted to see what her response was. I hadn't been able to read that yet and I was curious, so.
Okay. All right.
It is appropriate for Mary to make her motion right now if she wants to.
Okay, thank you. I would like to move that we create a commission to look at the application process and the vetting process to become a commissioner on the Human Rights Commission.
I'll second. All right, I'd like to open up for the commissioners for discussion.
I, I, I'm not, I, I, this is Eddie Morgan. I'm not opposed to that. I think it's a great idea. I think one of the things that we should take in consideration is the appearance of things. You know, if we're self, self-governing, that might look like there are some indiscretions. I think having a balance of power is what really causes rights and for people to, to, to be treated fairly. And so, but I do believe that our committee is very transparent. I feel we put all our information out there. So I do believe that we have the capacity to, to provide advice to the, to the, to the board of who should be nominated or not. But I do think we should be aware of that, of that aspect of not looking to, that we're affecting our own house. We have to have that balance of power.
So I, my concern around that, Eddie, is that the board has a staff, the board has a budget, the board has lawyers to vet people and we don't. You know, we are not supported in that manner. And, and, and I can tell you, as chair, the bandwidth, my concern is, is that we wouldn't do that good of a job because we don't have a lot of bandwidth. And I think it's really important.
And I think, I think we're in agreement on that, you know, that I'm not opposed to the, to the committee, but first, we're doing it in-house and what does that mean? How does that look? And do we have the bandwidth? I think we're on the same wavelength.
What I, I would like to maybe then, if we could clarify Mary's motion to clarify that what we will be doing is only upgrading the already existing application so it pertains to human rights and it's more relevant. And we've been given some tools by, by, by Jim Glover, our ex-chair and by the county commissioner to help facilitate that in a, in a committee. But maybe we should clarify that, that, that we would like to have a committee that, that is editing and upgrading the existing application so it's more relevant to a human rights commissioner.
Well, Lania, on a committee, are we allowed to have folks from outside of the commission on the committee? I didn't think we were.
Well, no, we can. We can invite people to come and support. You know, I already asked Jim if, if he would help participate in, in that. Or maybe that was another committee I asked him.
We never want to leave them.
Right, right. But it is, yeah, it, the public can come, but it still has to be done in the same manner, right? We still have the same hurdles and they can't be a part of the committee. But the public can come. All our meetings are open to the public and they can participate.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that. So if folks had a concern or something, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you for.
Could I clarify something?
Please, Bird.
They, when we set up a committee, we need to, we've talked about this before. We need to set a charge to that committee, what it is we expect them to do, who will be on it, the timeframe for them and so forth. And we have a, a motion on the floor now to set up this committee. I think our job now to tell the committee what we want them to do, including the kinds of things that we are going to say to them, these need to be included as criteria.
But we should, we should vote on, on setting it up because I, you've seconded it. And is there any more discussion? That's where we're at now, right?
There's discussion on this idea of setting up a committee and we talk about what the committee will do.
I, I, I think what the committee will do, here's my stab at it, Bird, is, is review and update the current application for the Human Rights Commission so it's more applicable to, to a human rights commissioner. Okay. Yes, sorry, I can't see everybody all the time.
Can I speak? So it seems to me, you know, no, and I'm assuming we're not actually taking any responsibility away from the supervisor who is going to be making the appointment. What we're, what we're trying to do is make that application easier to understand, easier to, to look at, to review and to make a decision based on, you know, the criteria that are in that application. Is that correct?
To make it relevant to this commission, not a generic one for any commission in the county.
Yes, and.
Erin has her hand up. She's had her.
Thank you. I need, I need support from you and David so I can see everybody. Hi, Erin. Erin?
Yes, I just unmuted myself. Okay, number one, I think we, I heard talk about having a visitor of the district attorney or tomorrow, I mean, our next meeting.
Meeting.
So I think an appropriate question would be, number one, do we have the right to review this document? And to what extent? And what are our guidelines? That will help to inform the committee what the job is. And I will be volunteering to be on the committee.
Thank you, Erin. I was going to ask you and David if you would both be a part of that committee. David?
David is putting his hand up.
Right on.
Do you have to chair all the committees or can you excuse yourself from that one? Or do you have to be at that, on the committee?
No, the chair doesn't have to be on all the.
I'd be willing to be a third on that committee.
Okay, Jim?
My only comment kind of.
Bird is.
My only comment kind of dovetails with what Bird was speaking of. I think when you set up this committee, I think there ought to be a timeline involved. I do, personally, I don't think that there's going to be any objection to the commission making suggestions for improvements to an application. It's a pretty generic application as it is. But I would sure hate, given the circumstances, I would hate to see this drag on for another month or two. I'd like to see a, some sort of a finish date in mind so that we can get this done or you can get this done.
Thank you, Jim. So on top of that, we have three commissioners. The, the board of supervisors wishes to give three applicants a new application. So this is, we do need to get on this right away and, and have, have a, have a deadline.
So I, I propose that we have, we have a deadline of a month with the end state or with the, that we have a new form as the application. That's what, the next time we meet, we look at the form and we agree on it or not. And I say we do that in the next, nope.
We're meeting next week. I don't think we'll be ready next week, so I would.
I'm saying a month.
Okay, I would suggest if I was going to amend my, a two-month committee to research and look at changes and additions to the generic application that's out there to be able to create one that more specifically speaks to the Human Rights Commission applicants. Somebody could write that out better than I just said it. I will love you forever.
I've got that in the notes, Mary. I've got it as.
I just want it to be, so I, I think that we could come together and can, how many commissioners can we have on the? Can, can we have four on the committee? Three. You know, Bird, we can have four?
Four.
Because we need you, Bird.
So remember, if you have four, you have to always have three to have a court, to have a full. So that's kind of, you know, just measure that out. That means three of you always have to show up in order to have a meeting.
I'd be more than willing to. Bird, though, you are, you're, you're the ultimate go-to grammarian person, everything. I think that we would be able to bring a good product forward by the April. by the April commission meeting, which would be the first Thursday of April, whenever that is.
Let me interject for a minute. You would also be able to keep the committee of three and then ask Bird to edit for you. So that might be a better way to utilize her skills because we have utilized her skills, yet not make it too complex.
Thank you, Lulania. Is our, is our meeting the first Thursday of the month?
It's next Thursday.
So it, but it's the first Thursday of every month, correct? So our, our, so April 1st, April Fool's Day, ha, 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 would be our meeting. So it would, would we want to give that our, our time to bring it forward for the commission to look at it and then be able to present it to the Board of Supervisors within the month of April after we looked at it? Is that our goal?
I will serve in whatever capacity you want me to, Lulania.
I want to be the fourth person on the committee.
I, I would prefer her to edit because we have another committee that we're gonna have to create here coming up soon.
Got it.
At our next meeting that's around our bylaws and whatnot. I, I just, I, and, and really where you need Bird is that Google Drive editorial and.
No, she's the queen. She's the magic. She's a magic woman. Okay, sorry for all the conversation. Somehow or another, I hope the motion's still in there and been seconded by Bird. We, we talked about. Can you reread the motion, David? Could you reread the motion? How it's?
Meg with her hand up.
Who did? Meg, Meg.
Had her hand up for a while.
Sorry, Meg.
Stalkies, yes.
Go ahead, Meg. We can't hear you.
Unmute yourself, Meg.
I'm very concerned that you are rushing to, to, to do this. And there's not anyone who's expressed very important concerns, who's on, on the committee. I'm not hearing anybody saying that they're going to consult with any of the people who have brought up the concerns. And again, it feels like a box is gonna be checked off that, you know, a new vetting process when maybe what needs to happen first is what you're saying, that go to the Board of Supervisors and try to get this on the agenda that, um, that this commission, Human Rights Commission needs to needs to do a few things before it can actually function as a, a fully representative Human Rights Commission. If, if you just get this done and, and, you know, in two months, how are you going to ensure that the voices that aren't at the table have put their stamp into what emerges out of this committee?
So, so Meg, I'd like to take the answer on that, Lulania.
Can I say, can I say something real quick?
Let's let Marian go first, then Eddie.
We, first of all, Meg, I appreciate what you're saying. And we feel the sense of urgency. Most of, most of our committees take six months. We're trying to push it forward because we feel the sense of urgency, number one. And number two, all of our meetings will be publicly posted. And for this, especially for this particular committee, we'll make sure that they are publicly posted so that we can, um, I'll talk with Bird and Lulania and Jim to figure out how to make sure that we get the community input that we need. But we are, we do feel the sense of urgency and we do want to be able to fill the commission seats that are missing. We, we want to fill those seats and we want to fill those seats so that we do have those other voices. So that sense of urgency is now. And that's how I feel. And that's the only reason why I think that the goal is to, if my understanding is correct, the goal is to work on creating the application that more, is more suitable for the Human Rights Commission. Present that to the supervisors, ask them if they agree with it. And if they agree with it, then we're able to give those applications to prospective people who want to be on the commission, who can be appointed by the Board of Supervisors. And I've got to assure you, Meg, that, that governing is the slowest, most slow process ever. And there can be a frustration with going too slow or too fast, but I'm, I, I, I feel a sense of urgency from everything that we've heard today. And that's the reason why we want to start looking at the application process so that we're able to, and I don't know what that's gonna look like yet. I don't know what the application's gonna look like yet. That's all point of forming a committee. Does that help a little, Meg?
I, I, I don't, I don't think so, but I would defer to other people who, um, who may feel less heard and not at the table.
Can I, can I say something real quick? I was next.
Eddie, you were next.
I, I, I trust David Haney. I trust Erin Rowe. I trust Mary. I think they're good people that are trying to do their best and to assume that they won't take in considerations the things that Ms. Ostowski has said. Make, gives me pause. And I think we should give them a chance to do the right thing. And if they don't, then, then we will talk to them. But I, 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 that's what I have to say. Uh, I think Bird has her hand up.
Thank you, Eddie. I wanted to add that Meg, the time would cut, would be when it's on the agenda for the approval of the commission. And then the public would be able to come and speak against it at that, at that time as well. So there would be, and then, and then if we approved it and it went to the Board of Supervisors, the public would also again have a time to speak up against it. Bird?
I, I just wanted to say, Eddie, you're, you're right. I trust the people. We, I know the people on this commission. And I do believe that they will take everything into consideration. I also think that everybody else who's not on the committee will tell them the kinds of things. For example, David, David brought up something earlier in the meeting when he talked about trauma. And then that was holding us accountable. And that's gonna happen because we have a team working of people who really are concerned about making this work. And I do trust the committee to come up with a very good suggestion.
Megan, I mean, Erin has her hand up.
So if we're gonna call this the project, the customizing our application project, I want to make two suggestions. One of them is that we first talk with someone on the Board of Supes to make sure that we have the right to do that. Because as we don't have a lot of bandwidth, I don't want to be just chasing our tail. And I also want to have a prior consult with county council to also ask them what things we have the right to discuss, what things we have the right to put on there. I want to have the guidelines before I just, before we waste all of our time.
This, this was a request from Virginia Bass specifically for us to do this.
Okay.
Um, and I've been on the phone with county council for quite a few days and, and they support us doing this as well. I, I, yeah, I, we're, we're there. You know, we've got, we just, now we just need to, to do it.
Very good.
You have a couple of hands up.
Okay.
David Haney and Mr. Glover and Burn, uh, Burn, you used to have her hand up.
Saw Jim's up before mine. Go ahead, Jim.
Well, I just wanted to make the point that somebody, I don't know if it would be David or Lulania, should make a point of taking the names of the people that are expressing reservations or concerns about this process and make sure that they specifically and others get invited to the, the meeting so that they have their input and won't be able to say later they weren't heard. I, I, I think they need to be heard and this is a good opportunity for that to happen.
David, can you, are you able to somehow copy, like get that kind of information? Or maybe what we could do is request anyone who would like to be invited to that, um, that meeting to email us at the HHR email at co.humble.gov? Uh, I better look that up.
I'll put it in the chat.
I would appreciate that, David. Sorry. All right.
Um, the, the point that I, the point that I just wanted to add is I think, uh, to me, what it sounds like in this process is there's going to be more opportunity for the public to be involved in this process of selection. May not be the end-all, final selection, people selecting. That sounds like that's still maybe potentially the Board of Supervisors. But it does sound like now, um, the public has more opportunity to give input. Where and which I think, um, maybe before the public didn't feel that way, considering the shortness of time between finding out on an agenda, who's gonna be the appointee? And the, then a few days, very short time later, the meeting to actually put that on the consent calendar and push that into, into the records. Now hopefully there's more space. Hopefully the community seeing that there's more space to, uh, be involved in this process.
So, so I want to clarify that we're not saying that the community can be involved in the app, in the process. What we're, what we're asking is the community to come and participate in the review of the application and the updating of the application. Not in actual application process. I just want to clarify that for the record, David.
And real quick, before, um, anybody else, I just wanted to, uh, just read the current motion that we still have open, that we still do need to vote on once we're there. As of right now, I have it as a motion to create a two-month committee to review and update the application and vetting process to make it more relevant to the functions of a human rights commissioner.
That has my vote.
All right. I, we. Hold on just a minute. I believe we had one more person from the public that was, which to speak on this.
Mary has her hand up and it.
I, I realize that, Eddie, but.
And I was gonna say that Burns, Carpe, Peanut Burns had her hand up a while ago and then she put it down.
I did have my hand up. I just have to reiterate that I'm extremely concerned about the, um, urgency issue. I think that, that if you're going ahead completely with urgency, you are not going to dig deep enough. And you're, you're, you're inhibiting the process by having it be so urgent. This is a huge discussion. The fact that you have three people who want to fill out an application, set that aside, put a weight on that and have the discussion. I don't think that, that you have to rush through the new application because you have people waiting.
Yeah, I, I want to respond to that, that if, if that committee comes to the commission and says we need more time, then, then that's absolutely valid and, and there won't be a problem with that. Uh, it just, we have learned that it helps to put a time limit so that things actually, actions happen and, and committees meet. Otherwise, you know, things can get pulled on, pulled to the wayside. And we want to make sure that people do focus on this and that we do accomplish the task. If it takes longer than two months, it takes longer than two months. And we're okay with that.
I hear that. I appreciate that. I, um, but I heard the word urgent and urgency many times. And if you're going in with that agenda, that this is urgent, we have to get this done right now. It doesn't matter that you're calling it three months or two months or one month. You have this sense of urgency and you're going to be thinking and doing and, and considering under tho, under that umbrella. And that's not, I, I don't think it'll, it'll get what we want. I'm just concerned about that attitude.
And I, and I can appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Quite honestly, um, as a commissioner, I do feel a sense of urgency. We're having a special meeting. We're trying to figure things out. We're trying to do the best we can for our community and uh, something came up that we didn't realize could be, the reason that we're here is because of the sense of urgency. We, we, we're having a special meeting. This is not a regular meeting of the Human Rights Commission. We've all spent extra time tonight. The community members and the commissioners are all sitting here trying to figure out a way to move forward in a better manner because we now realize that maybe, uh, the way that the selection process was done and the, and the application did not address the things that needed to be addressed to make a conscious decision to, by the, by the Board of Supervisors. And so there kind of is a sense of urgency. Even with a sense of urgency, it'll be four or five months before we are able to actually be able to present. So we're just trying to do our part to bring it forward to the next part. There are so many pieces of the puzzle. Carponi, and I feel you. I, I really do. And I hope that you will, um, watch for the, uh, the announcement for, of the meetings and, um, come, come, give your voice, be part of the meeting.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, is there any more discussion? Uh, Bird?
Yes, I just want to say that from, from what has happened and our, all our discussion tonight, it's obvious to me that the application that is in process right now, that's being used right now, is inadequate. And what we're trying to do is to put in something that's better. Maybe it won't be the best, but it will be better. And once we start using it, we may get better ideas of how to make it even better. I don't think that this is going to be the only thing that ever happens. Particularly if we do have more training and we do dig deeper into things, we get more community input. So I would say that what we really want is to improve the process we have right now. And that that's what this committee is trying to do.
Thank you, Bird. Okay, are we ready to take this to a vote?
I think.
Could you please read us back on what exactly we're voting on in the title of the committee and who will be on the committee?
And who's chair?
You may have to remind me, I'm sorry, I think I may have heard it once, the name of the committee, was it Application Review Committee? Or it was something more snazzy somebody said than that?
I was thinking of either customization of our application process, but actually Bird, maybe that's be better, improving our application process. How does that sound?
Application Improvement Committee?
Improvement.
Improvement.
And I, I'd, I'd like to name Erin as chair as she has lots of experience.
Editing and making forms. I actually do. Okay, lovely.
So I've got.
Improvement, can we call it review? Because improvement, it qualifies us. We're such a dichotomous culture. It's either good or bad. Can we just say the Application Review Committee?
I like that word too. Yes, review is good.
Thank you. It's not a, it's not a win or lose. It's a.
Let's let him read it so we can get it going.
So I've got a motion to create a two-month application review committee to review and update the application and vetting process to make it more relevant to the functions of a human rights commissioner.
I need you to correct that because we're not updating the vetting process. That's up to the lawyers and all those folks. What we're doing is taking the application.
Gotcha. So let me, uh, one more time. We got a motion to create a two-month application review committee to review and update the application to make it more relevant to the functions of a human rights commissioner.
Um, I think we're saying that three times, review, update and customize. We can, we can say that just once. We're saying the same thing three times.
Motion to create a two-month application review committee.
To, and then after that is the problem.
To make it more relevant to the functions of a human rights commissioner?
Perfect.
Straight to it. Motion to create a two-month application review committee to make it more relevant to the functions of a human rights commissioner.
Or to make our application process more appropriate.
Our.
No, because it's not our process. It's the Board of Supervisors' process.
Well, our applications, make our application more appropriate.
We don't have our own application.
Well, isn't that what we're talking about is making one?
The, no, this is still the Board of Supervisors' application. They have just asked for us to help make it more relevant.
I've got motion to create a two-month application review committee. I've got motion to create a two-month application review committee to make the commissioner application more relevant to the functions of a human rights commissioner.
That's good. Nailed it.
All those in favor? Dubois. Guy, how, how do you vote? I can't hear you.
Said I, I have my little green check up there.
Thank you, thank you. Lochte, yes. Haney, yes. Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Row, yeah. Lyons, yes. Dubois, yes. Any abstentions?
Desire, yes.
Oh, Desire, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, Monique. Any abstentions? Any objections? All right, unanimously, unanimously, we will be creating that committee and, uh, look forward to seeing all the good work, you guys. Yay, let's give ourselves a hand. We're getting to that spot in the conversation. We have one more, um, agenda item. Um, we already went into it through, uh, by reading Supervisor Bass's letter. Um, but what I was hoping is that we would also create another committee to review our bylaws and our procedures to organize them and ensure that we have a great onboarding package and that we have updated bylaws that are very clear. Because one of the, the issues that came up through that this is that we need a better way for all our new commissioners to really see what those policies and procedures are. And, and so I would like for us to consider creating a committee so we could go into those policies, that the bylaws and those policies and procedures and, and, and make sure that they're working with, you know, COVID has changed a lot of things and we have a lot of new commissioners. So I'd like to open the floor for discussion around that. Eddie?
Yeah, so I think, I think that there's been a lot of work put into it. I think we've talked about dashboards. We do have, I think we're way ahead of a lot of other uh, organ, uh, committees and things of that nature. And so I think not only is how we're going to write the things is all, how we're going to organize them. Because we all are pressed for time and need to stretch and do things like that. And so, so we need to, we need to have a system where it's easy to find. And so I'm highly recommending that we use the Google Drive and, and work with those intuitive systems. And I, I, to me, that's very important because I think it saves time and saving time helps us make better decisions where we can spend more time thinking about the real issues at hand.
Thank you, thank you, Eddie. Jim?
I just wanted to mention that, uh, as I did earlier in the day, I would be more than happy to be a non-voting uh, participant in helping make this happen since a lot of the materials that you'll be working with were developed during the time that I was on the commission.
Thank you, Jim. We appreciate that.
Bird? I would be willing to work on that with Eddie doing the technological stuff and I doing the proofing.
Thank you. Mary?
I unfortunately have got to go. Um, but, uh, and I can't vote in advance, but there's still a quorum. And so, um, you guys are awesome. Erin, let me know when we have our first meeting. And I appreciate all the comments from all of the community as well as the Board of Supervisors. Have a great night, you guys.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Be safe.
You're the best. Bye, guys.
All right. All right, where were we at, you guys? Sorry, I'm getting tired. Eddie, can you, can you remind me of where we were?
We're, we're, we're talking about, uh, the, the protocols and organizing it. Jim, uh, said he was being willing to help. Bird said she'd be willing to help as long as, uh, I did the, uh, uh, electronic stuff. I think this would be a great opportunity for Guy, uh, you know, Mr. Commissioner offered. Participate. And that way he can learn through the process and he's, uh, I know he has a great background. Uh, I think he'd be able to help.
Guy, would you be willing to, to be a part of this committee? That will be looking over our bylaws and our procedures and protocols to organize them and make sure that they're clear so it's easy for us to follow and refer to. And we probably need to update a few things since COVID as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because just we've, where we have a lot of new commissioners coming on and, and we just want to make sure that there's resources for them to refer to the steps and the rules and all those things. Um, so they feel supported not just by us as a team, but through the documents as well.
I, I, I also like to state that I think a lot of this, once there is a, a finished product, is going to fall under the secretary. And so I think he had, he has a vested interest in it. I don't know how he would want to participate, uh, but, uh, I think that's an important factor to take in consideration.
David, would you consider being on this committee as well?
I'd love to be on this committee so I can, uh, make sure that I'm following all the bylaws appropriately myself.
Fantastic. All right. Bird, in a motion?
We do. I move that we set up a bylaws and policy review committee.
All right, do we have a second?
Monique, seconds.
Monique, seconds. All right, I'd like to open the floor for discussion. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion from the public? Levia?
Levia has her hand up.
Okay, Levia?
Hi, I just wanted to name again because it feels like it kind of gets swept in and out that, um, I would love to see that if you're going to be doing an onboarding process, that may be the time for your newer folks to get that equity training. And I'd like to see that be done by Equity Arcade and not outsourced somewhere else so that we can have that transparency and support of local communities, um, other community organizations.
All right. Thank you for that. All right, are we ready to vote? Any more discuss, public comment? All right, all those in favor? Please raise your hands. Morgan? Ornoff? Lochte?
Yes.
Haney? Miller? Row? Monique?
Monique, how are you voting?
I, I second and yes.
Yes. All right, and Dubois, yes. All right, do we have any abstentions? Any knows? All right, unanimously, we will start that committee as well. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the public. I know these conversations are hard and I feel awkward in my role sometimes. Bird?
I would just like to say thank you to the people from the public who brought up some things in a very difficult situation. And to assure you that everything that you have said, I take very seriously and hope that I can improve my outlook on everything in the community by taking into consideration every voice that I hear. So thank you, each one of you. And do hold us accountable. Make us be accountable to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bird. Yes, I wanna, I wanna say thank you to all of you. These conversations do get tough, but we all are here to figure it out. And we did hear you on the equity. Um, you know, we did hear what you say. It doesn't mean we can all always respond to everything, but I hope through our actions in the course of the next year and the next few months that you, you, you're able to see where this commission's heart really lies. Um, so it is, we are one minute early commissioners. Wow, thank you so much. Um, I would like to call our meeting to a close at 6:59 PM. Bravo, great job. Great job, everybody. Have a great night. I'll stay on for a minute. Are we, are we downloading and everything?
Yes, the minute, the minute you, you close, I'll, I'll be downloading. So don't close me out yet.
I won't. And David, do you have all the information that you need from the chat and everything?
I'm not a host. If someone would save the chat, Eddie or Lelania? I can't save it.
That is a good question.
Wait, wait, I'm going to make you a host right now.
There you go.
You should have been the whole time.
Because if you know how to paste and copy that, you need to teach me that, David.
I get that. That's something that I have never been able to figure out. The only way is saving it with the, uh, dialogue. And even right now, I don't see the option to save it, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I need to figure that out.
Um, you should see it at the bottom right of the chat box with the button with the three dots.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And it doesn't, uh, give you a, um.
Give me that option. I'll have to, I will have to research that if that's a possibility.
It used to be, uh, I used to be able to save any chat and I can't anymore. And that's happened in the last week or so for any others that I've tried. I don't know what's changed, but it's, um, it, it is changed.
I, I think a host would have to save the chat.
Yeah, no, it's not letting me. It is not letting me.
Lelania, you're muted?
Okay, David, you should be host now. I just made you host. Let's see if that works.
I am not seeing the ability to save the chat.
It says on mine, it says file.
But does it say?
Oh, wait, I got it. I got it. I got it. I got it.
Did you find it?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So David, I will put it in the, wait a minute. Boom.
Yeah, you send it to me, Eddie, and I'll make sure that it gets in, um.
There we go. Okay, I want to be KM.
And I, I just also, uh, want to thank the community members that came to this meeting and made their voices heard. That's the kind of thing that we really need at, um, all of these government meetings. It's great to be a part of this. Thank you.
Okay, I think we, I have it.
Good?
Yeah, I believe so.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
Wait, 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 just wait a second there.
All right.
Yeah, I'm, okay, I'm officially stopping the recording.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, all of you guys and the public. Appreciate all your time on a Wednesday evening. Take care. Thank you, Jim.